Back to 100%?
I think so. He's reaching for hell, so.
All right, there you go.
He had the dog on the run earlier today.
Oh, there, that's for sure, then.
It's interesting, the city staff just lays in wait. They don't, they don't come on early like we all did when we were. They're on the, on the base right away, five minutes earlier. Just sitting there, just gonna hang until absolutely depressed play.
Yep.
Is my alarm.
Baskin's right on time, Mike, always.
Joyce, I had some rum chata the other day, I thought of you.
Right, right.
You what?
I had some rum chata the other day at Nature Center, I thought of you. Can't remember why. Oh, that's right, because you, you drink it every day.
I lost my, my canteen.
You lost your rum chata water bottle? Oh, good heavens.
Darn it.
It's depressing.
Yeah, so.
Been sober ever since.
Oh, I'm tired.
What, anyhow? Oh, she's looming in. Teresa's zooming.
There she is.
Hello.
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 Yours is 5:30, McKee? 29. Ah, that's wrong.
Yeah, that one.
The world clocks.
We got Jason, so we're all here, so.
Is Jason here? Right on. He, he's a councilman, he comes on, look at that. He's, he's appearing. All right. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with every tea and justice.
Thomas, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Postma.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is adoption of the agenda with the addition of a resolution for item number 15 and some consent agenda licenses. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Paul.
Second.
Joyce, thank you. Look at that, Tom, that's a flag, call their name. Uh, item number.
Roll call.
Oh.
It's Jason's gun.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, okay.
Councilmember Baskin.
Yeah, I'm throwing a gun in the whole system here.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number two, motion to approve the minutes from January 19th, 2021. So moved. You can make.
Second.
Thank you, Obala. Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number three, item number three, there's recognition and awards, there are none. Uh, moving on to item number four, looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Paul, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, item number five, a motion to extend the emergency COVID sick leave benefits through March 31st, 2021. Trish?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we talked about this at the last work session. If there are any questions, I can, I can answer them. Otherwise, it would be just the extension of the emergency paid sick leave as it was in, um, the program, under the federal program until March 31st, 2021, with a retroactivity to January 1 of 2021.
And Trish, that originally expired December 31st, and council is going to.
Correct.
And appreciate councilperson Waller bringing that to our attention. I think it's a fair deal for everybody to extend that, so I'm looking for a motion to, uh, for number five.
So moved.
Joyce?
Second.
Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. The next several items are going to be the Steve Lang show, going to look forward to that. Item number six, designated short Elliot Hendrickson as the consultant for the airport's five-year capital improvement plan. Stephen?
Worst part is Mitch is not on the call, so I can't pawn anything.
It's all you, baby.
Yeah, we, we discussed this item at the last work session, the process of, um, requesting statements of qualifications from qualified contractors to help us facilitate our five-year CIP at the Austin Municipal Airport. And through that process, uh, we are recommending that we continue with our, uh, with SEH. We have worked with them over the past 20 years. They've done a, a good quality job for us at the airport. And again, we would recommend, um, continuing our relationship with SEH for this program.
Uh, council, questions or a motion? So moved. Jeff, thank you.
Second.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Item number seven is a resolution approving an airport farm lease with VS Farms LLC. Stephen?
We have different farm leases around the community, uh, multiple ones out at the airport and also at the Cook Farm. This one in front of you tonight is at the airport, um, for mowing of grass and alfalfa land inside the airport fence. We have worked with VS Farms for many years. They continue to do a good job for us, and we would recommend continuing our land lease, um, with them for the next three years, 2021, 22, and 23, at the same rates that we had, uh, in the previous agreement. We have what we call nonproductive land and productive land. Um, what this pertains to is mainly areas right around the taxiway and runway. Uh, we consider nonproductive land as they need to be maintained in grass. But we do have, uh, 41 acres of land off to the side of the airport runway that can be maintained a little bit more with, uh, alfalfa and a better crop, so we charge a little bit more for that property. Uh, but with this, we'd recommend approval of a farm lease with VS Family Farms for the next three years.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. If there are, uh, entertaining questions or a motion, a resolution? So move the resolution. Paul, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number eight is a resolution looking to approve a contract with Fox Electric Incorporated for the Packer Arena LED light project. Mr. Lang?
Uh, Packer Arena is already 18 years old, uh, built back in 2003. And many of the high bay lights that were installed during that construction project were 1,000 watt metal halide fixtures, uh, very high energy consumption type of lighting. And we budgeted $100,000 to upgrade the lighting at Packer Arena, the high bay lighting, and also entry and locker room lighting as well. So we developed, uh, specifications for, uh, retrofitting or, um, installing new LED lighting throughout the facility. And we took bids on that with three local electrical contractors submitting quotes. Fox Electric was the low bidder at $41,214 compared with $59,000 from Winkles and $64,000 from Austin Electric. We also, uh, through that bidding process, we, we looked at two different styles of LED bulbs, uh, LED fixtures. You can, there's lots of different brands out there, lots of different qualities. Um, this, the kind of Leadalux is, is the low bid numbers. And another, um, they're kind of a, a lower range LED fixture provider. Uh, we also bidded out looking at a Lithonia, which is probably, uh, an upper class of the, of the LED fixtures. And in looking at the cost difference between, uh, Leadalux and, and Lithonia, we would, even though it's, uh, maybe a lesser quality fixture at, uh, a cost savings of a little over $9,000, we would, we would recommend going with, uh, Fox Electric and the Leadalux product. In addition, we will, uh, after the project is complete, we'll take the information and apply for a rebate through Austin Utilities. We believe that our rebate could be upwards of $10,000 for our electrical rebate. Uh, and then also, when we look at the, the cost, the rebates, uh, we're, we're looking at some, somewhere around a four-year payback with electrical savings on this project. So all of those things included, we would recommend, uh, awarding this project to Fox Electric using the Leadalux, uh, product.
Excellent, thank you. LEDs are outstanding. Uh, questions, council, or looking for a resolution for number eight?
So moved the resolution.
That was Paul, thank you. And Mike? Who did the second? Yes, of course he did.
That's what I heard.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dankert. Number nine is a resolution approving amendment number one to the airport layout plan and exhibit, exhibit A property map project. Stephen?
A lot of this work is spurred on from a previous, um, easement agreement that we worked through last summer with the airport armory. Now we need to update all of our documents. And we previously, council previously approved an agreement with SEH in the amount of, uh, $130,600 to complete this airport layout plan. Uh, working through the process and working with MINDOT, MINDOT has required, uh, SEH to also evaluate our, uh, airport VOR. Um, that is a instrument system for the airport. It's actually located about five miles south of the airport. So the city of Austin owns a small parcel of property out in the county, five miles south of the airport. Not many people know about that. But this, uh, airport layout plan and, and exhibit A, we need to include that property as part of that document. So in order to add that into the scope of work, SEH has identified about, uh, $7,700 in or, uh, to research documents and incorporate everything into the airport layout plan and exhibit A. So we would look at this as amendment number one to the original contract. We anticipate that the FAA will fund this amendment similarly to how they funded the original contract with 90% from, um, the FAA and 10% from CARES dollars. We have not gotten a final, uh, confirmation on that, but that is, in the little bits and pieces we've gotten, we believe this will be the case. If not, we would have to fund it, uh, more with local dollars. We typically, these grants are funded 90% FAA, 5% state, and 5% local. So there would still be a fairly small, uh, impact to the city, but we would recommend awarding this amendment number one.
Questions? If not, I would hand a resolution for item number nine.
So moved the resolution.
Thank you, Paul.
My second.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
I'm going with Joyce Pashusta on that, Tom. You won the lottery tonight. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution, uh, approving amendment number one to the airport hangar resurfacing project. Mr. Lang?
Yes, this is a re-roof, re-roofing project that we did to our large hangar located at the airport. Our original grant for this project and, and total project cost was $190,000, $190,800. Through the project construction, we identified one change order in the amount of $19,770 for some, some gutters, downspouts, and snow retention system up on the roof, so we don't have snow sliding off the roof. In, uh, working through the final document costs incorporating the change order, we have a final construction project cost of $210,570, uh, of which this amendment will, uh, account for a grant increase to account for 70% of that cost coming from the state and the remaining $30,000 coming from the city. So, uh, tonight, we'd recommend approving this grant agreement with the state grant amendment to, um, for 70% of the cost of this overall project.
Thank you. Council? Entertaining motion, motion, or resolution number 10?
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a resolution looking to approve a construction agreement with the Minnesota DOT for the 28th Street Northeast Bridge. Stephen?
I believe I just shared my screen, so you can kind of see what we're looking at here with the memo. Um, first, I'll, I'll just jump forward to page number two. This, uh, this deals with our, um, our corridor plan for upgrading the bridges through Austin. This summer, 28th Street out by Gerard and the Country Club and the airport is planned for reconstruction. Um, as part of that process, MINDOT will pay, um, up to 7% of the total construction cost for aesthetic improvements on this project. And, and as part of our corridor plan for our bridges, we've identified this bridge as a secondary structure, and it would have consistent improvements as other secondary structures throughout the corridor. The 11th Drive Bridge that was built by the Quick Trip Truck Stop, that is a secondary structure. So we anticipate this bridge to look very similar to the 11th Drive Bridge with, uh, upgraded railings, some, some coloring and surfacing to the bridge, some brick and architectural concrete finishes, as well as a, a wider sidewalk with a, a little ribbon, uh, red concrete ribbon that runs along the edge of the sidewalk to kind of give a visual barrier between the edge of the sidewalk and the road. So, um, we, with those improvements, we are about $49,000 over the, uh, 7% allotment. And in order to cover that original, or that extra cost, we've been working with the Hormel Foundation, and we have received authorization for a grant to, for, to cover this additional cost. There will be no cost to the city for these, uh, extra improvements. It will be covered by a Hormel Foundation grant. Uh, but it would run, all of this would run through the city, uh, with this agreement with MINDOT. So with all of that, we would recommend approval of this MINDOT agreement with, uh, future funding for it coming from the Hormel Foundation.
Okay, and Stephen, on that itemization, it says one six-foot shoulder, and you look at the, the picture, is there? Uh, and it also calls for a 12-foot walking sidewalk, but it looks like Councilmember Fisher walking across the bridge has only got a 10-foot walking path there. He's carrying his purse, as you see. Is that going to be a 12-foot there?
It is going to be a 12-foot that has been adjusted.
And then the six, six-foot? The six-foot, uh.
Six foot is on, six-foot shoulder, which would be on the east side of the bridge. And then it'll be a 12-foot, um, walking path on the west side. And that will connect into the trail that leads to the Nature Center and also the trail out in the county that continues south. I believe that's called the Shooting Star Trail.
Okay, awesome.
I thought it was a satchel or briefcase, Paul.
A satchel? It could be a satchel. Craig?
Uh, Mr. Lang, I think we covered this before, but, uh, what it's labeled, general elevation. There'll be the, um, fencing on that side as well, if I remember correctly.
Yes, correct. Though there will be, um, a railing on both sides of this bridge.
Oh, good.
Right.
Yeah, it seems like it should have a railing on the Quick Trip one, too, to me, but. I'm no engineer, but, yeah. I know one, I know one in the council, that's all I know. Um, so we're looking for a resolution number 11.
So move the resolution.
Paul, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Stephen, you set this one out for a little bit. We're going to call on, on Kevin here. Number 12 is a motion authorizing a two-week extension to the ice season at Packer Arena. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As I have brought forward at the work session following the last council meeting, there's been a request put forward by Austin Youth Hockey Association to extend the ice season at Packer Arena from what would have been February 28th for an end date through March 14th. There are additional related expenses to this, including a temporary dehumidification system, installing that and running it. And it sounds as though at least 70%, likely more of this additional cost will be recouped through rentals. I do note still a hope of the Hockey Association and Mauer County Curling Club would rent some of that ice to, to have this extension be granted. Uh, I have answers if you've got any questions.
Okay, any questions, council? I guess not, Mr. Nelson. We're going to look for a motion then for number 12?
So moved.
Second.
Obala? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 13, looking for a motion, calling for a public hearing on March 15th, 2020, at 5:30 PM for the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number 15 for New Tech Biosciences.
So moved.
Jeff?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 14, looking for a motion, granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegal stored vehicles at the following location, 907 Third Ave Northeast, the Alejo property.
So moved.
Paul, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 15, the addition is a resolution looking to approve a federal transportation project grant application. Mr. Lang?
Each year, there is, uh, some federal dollars available, uh, for communities in District 6, which is located in southeast Minnesota. Um, there's about 10 communities of similar size of Austin. They have to be population 5,000 or greater to be able to apply for these, uh, federal funds. And this year, we have identified, uh, a future, this, this would be funding that would be available in 2025. And there's a great deal, that's five years out, because there's a great deal of planning and paperwork that needs to, uh, be prepared prior to being ready to construct a project, um, such as this. So we have proposed, um, a project in 2025 for Oakland Avenue West from Main Street to 12th Street. And, and then also one block of Oakland Avenue East from Main Street to First Street, right by the fire station. Um, this roadway was, uh, originally built in 1979, and we did a rehab project on it in 2002. Um, and we are not only experiencing some, some surfacing issues, but there are also some underground infrastructure issues related to water main and sanitary sewer that would also spur along this project. So we feel that it is a, a good project, uh, that would meet a lot of the federal requirements and would be, uh, would meet the competitive nature of other projects proposed by other communities. And we have identified a, a total cost of the project to $3.6 million. And shown in, uh, the memo is, uh, 80%, 20% split. The, the grants are maxed out at 80% of the total cost. Um, but in looking at some documentation today, there is only $2.1 million available in the federal grant. So we would actually change that a little bit. Uh, our request is looking at more of a 60-40 split, 60% federal grant request and 40% state aid, um, which comes to about 2.1 million in, uh, federal request and 1.6 million in state aid requests. So we also, above and beyond that, anticipate about a half a million dollars in water and sanitary sewer utility repairs. And that 1.5 million dollars of state aid, we would likely assess these property owners in 2025 as part of our, uh, normal assessment program. So part, part of those state aid dollars could be offset with assessments to adjacent property owners. So that is the, the scope of the project that we would put together for our grant agreement. And we need a council resolution to support the project as part of the grant application. So we would request approval of this project and a resolution to move this forward for a federal grant application.
So we're looking for a resolution for number 15. If there are any more questions? So move the resolution. Jeff, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, Stephen, anything else on your mind you want to talk about? Did you get enough time? With us?
I'm good. I'm good until the next, uh, work session.
Roger, thank you. Uh, citizens addressing council. Any citizens wishing to address the council? Hearing none. Moving on to the honorary council member, we have Teresa Lugo on Zoom. It's her second meeting. Teresa, any insights or knowledge you've gained in the last 25 minutes? You want to share with us?
No, Your Honor, just thank you for allowing me to be part of this.
You bet. Thank you. Reports, recommendations, Craig?
Uh, let's see, the only thing I have to, of note is the DCA continues to help Mauer County on the Business Assistance Program. They have till the 15th of next month for those impacted by Executive Order 20-dash-nine-nine. And, uh, encourage those businesses to, uh, take advantage of that, uh, application.